All right, I've got six thirty and I call this be my order. If you would, I'll have an invitation. And the Father will come before you this evening thanking the magnifying of the name and knowing that all that we are and all that we can do and all of our strength and wisdom comes from you. We return that plea back to you. We ask that your hand be upon us this evening as you do the visits in town and solid city. Let us do the best of our ability to represent all of us. We ask all these things in thy gracious name. Amen. You don't need to plead with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Commissioner Brown, if you recite our mission statement, please.
Yes, sir. To advance a framework for our success through balanced government, dynamic partnerships, and an engaged community.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Underwood, if you recite our easy statement.
Yes, sir. Solid City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education thrive to sense in a globally competitive society.
All right, thank you. All right, any adjustments to the agenda?
There are formal adjustments, Mayor, so you guys should probably need to, uh, the pipe of the four point four is at four point three. Uh, that's what we're gonna do today, the change, they need to follow any of the new development. Uh, we'll approve it then.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all of the, uh, aye, aye, all those opposed like sign. Begin this approving. The Senate, here.
I'll make a motion to be approved in the Senate chamber.
Correct. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion, any questions, or anything about the consensus, Jim? Hearing none, all of those in favor say aye, all those opposed like sign, and the motion carries. All right. With that, we'll go right into the public hearing. First one up is four point one, Tim's Farm and Forestry.
Well, we've been, um, the first items on the, on the public hearing is our, um, item R twenty-three that we go forward there from deal one, spot paving. Um, this owner is Tim's Farm and Forestry. The applicant is a barber child of American engineering. He, the request is for a conditional zoning of two lots from agricultural residential to residential reconditioned. The location of the parcels are off of Jordan Bruce Drive and acreage is approximately one hundred sixty-eight, eight, sixty-eight and a half acres. The planning board heard this item on April seventeenth and recommended that the board, um, approve this item. As you can see from the subject property map, the property is located in south of US sixty-four and West Third Street and just to the east of Land Jordan Road. The zoning map shows that this area is currently zoned as agricultural residential. Agricultural residential is one of our recent zoning districts. The land map, um, identifies that this area as well as the surrounding areas should be developed as rural residential. The land development map of plan was adopted in December of twenty seventeen and since that time a lot of changes have been, um, going on in the area with the addition of several commercials as well as industrial development. Rural residential is defined by the plan development plan in areas of very low intensity that are either environmentally sensitive or are located beyond the anticipated utility serving area for. As you can see from the subject property, um, pictures, the land is partially cleared. The only is proposed into construction area with seven, seven hundred and sixty-six tile units. Of those, two hundred and ninety-six would be single-family residential, a hundred and ninety-two townhomes, and two hundred and eighty-eight apartment units. The site will have stormwater management, housing areas, as well as cornea box. The site plan shows, um, the future layout. The developer does plan to do the development phases as, um, amended to become available in the interim. The applicant has submitted conditions which are in your packet. Um, for planning department, we have reviewed it, um, reviewed and accept. The conditions regarding project buffers, greenways, parks, and sidewalks, housing type spacing issues. The other conditions, um, we refer to the public floor and sewer would have to be approved by public works and public materials. Um, the options for tonight are to approve the conditions as stated, approve with amended conditions, or deny the request. And if in the planning commission did vote, um, fifty for one, then the board approved this request. Um, that, that's presentation.
Yes, so, uh, looking at the packet on the second approval worksheet, it says approval of additional conditions amended by board. So, does that mean that after tonight, town is gonna, or town staff is gonna propose additional amendments to the developer?
No, sir, um, the additional conditions would have to be, um, discussed with the applicant tonight and have them accepted. Um, but that's the option for the board to put additional conditions in.
So, other than the ones that you recommended for one, two, and three, are there any other conditions that the town is recommending?
Not from the planning department.
Okay, so any question, panel?
No, not at this time.
So then, that's my question. Is the, is the town gonna come back later and you're after the, oh, well, we, we told you we need A, B, and C, but we need D, C, and F too. Cause I, I, I like to, if there's gonna be additional conditions, I'd like the applicant to have an opportunity to know what those are, know what the requirements are gonna be, and have an opportunity to have a discussion. And I don't want it just sprung applicant. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having an evening here ahead of the day, but it, it, that's, that's how the verbiage makes it seem. When you say approval of, of additional condition amended by the board, it makes it seem like at a later point in time, based on that, there's word choice, that other conditions are gonna be sprung applicant. And I don't, I don't want that, I want, if there is a condition that panel staff is important, I'd like a discussion in advance with the applicant, so the applicant knows what you're dealing with.
Understood, um, but you do, and the board, you do have the right to say, um, additional conditions, and that's why tonight.
We understand that, but we're not the experts, so we rely on panel staff to give us those recommendations. Cause other than Curtis, one of us is working with water, wastewater, none of us is working with planning, so I don't know. But really, all the staff, you know, there's all.
Correct, and from the planning, I can only approve the ones that are for project buffers, greenways, and housing type, and those are fine. Um, now, as development goes along, there may be other things that come up in wastewater and water and sewer that we don't know about right now.
Has anything been forecasted the applicant about what may occur in the future?
No.
When the planning board recommended seven, you wanted to approve, was it with the applicant's conditions or with the town's recommending the conditions?
With the applicant's conditions.
Because that wasn't clear from the packet.
Yeah, I, I do have one question, um, and when, when we're looking, when we look at this, I had, I didn't see recommendation. Um, or the compatibility with the existing LDP shows that this recommends this rural residential, but we're, what you're suggesting is this, you know, if not, it's gonna go against the LDP, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then what we would need to do, we would need to, I think it would be approved and inconsistent.
Yes, sir.
And so we just got one overarching reason, and that's because it recommended, uh, the, the LDP recommends rural residential. But are there some reasons that would go along that? Cause that's just one big broad reason.
No, I'm sorry.
So usually in our packets, when there's factors that lean to approval or in, or denial, or consistent versus inconsistent, usually those are given to us and they're bolded, as to which ones are odd. We just had a one overarching. And usually in the packet, the, whatever the planning board, however they voted is in here in their rationale, and so we have that for background, not in the packet. So the only reason that I can glean from the submission inconsistency is that, is because the LDP recommends rural residential, but there's no so. Usually over that, there would be listings of some reasons. That's just, that's just broad, um, so.
Well, it is inconsistent with the current land's plan, but the area is changing, so, um, it is beyond our view to go against the land's plan at this time.
Right, and that's why we have to approve the amendment, but I guess what I'm asking is, other than that very broad-based reason of not making rural residential, are there any other reasons that are inconsistent with the LDP?
That is the only reason why, based, based on the area that is recommended as rural residential, it has its own inconsistencies.
Well, I had just one question, this concerning the groups that are going to be, uh, and only twenty-five things. And if, uh, and I, probably don't think Bill, we're gonna ask him a question, if he's had a project between the past, which can go over to the, or the street. Bill can pay, and weren't over, they weren't up to DOT standards, and building companies, if they, the streets provided here, if it ever comes up, be added to the build to DOT standard, like, say, dual if you wanted to, they know.
That would be a question if that's answered by the applicant or by public works.
And I recommend the second part of the question, if it ever comes up, it's a private thing, it's found along that, we could do the, no, we wouldn't.
Then, again, that would be on the public works. What the name is gonna be. We do have, we do have, we do have, um, the applicant and speaker's board that's in.
Do you have any more questions, uh, in the board now? So the public here, four point one, you don't have to do that again over the back. Uh, we've got three people assigned in the P. Uh, you can come up, you give your name, address, uh, put the code in here, and the first one, Tom Kay.
Thank y'all for the opportunity to be here tonight and to speak on this project. It's been quite, uh, labor of love and also a labor of opportunity because it was those, many who went before me and the company that I represent, who had a vision, something called negative, like.
Give me a second.
The red is what being, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, anyway, my name is Tom Kay, where did it be all, my address, personal address is eleven ninety-one Highway forty-eight in Gary, North Carolina. My personal residence, I'm working out in Morrisville, two thousand, it's in Parkway, in Marple areas, I think. Um, and as I was saying, those who've gone before me, had the wisdom to understand that if a mega site were gonna come to this area, they needed to be able to provide places for people to live and work, and a mixed-use kind of community that had a lot of area and opportunities for lifestyle, single-family townhomes, bar. That tried to allow for a lot of different styles of living as well as the age brackets and income bracket. And I'm, I'm proud to represent D R Horton because they are a company that started its vision based on affordability, visibility, and quality. They've become the number one builder in the country, um, closed over eighty-one thousand homes in twenty twenty-one, and then this year we will close our one million homes, and where it'll be, I don't know which state it'll be in, but we know this year we'll track one million homes built by that company. And so we're coming to this with the intention, not just to get something approved and wait for the building to show up or what's the tale of the town. We're coming here really to try to make this vision of livability and affordable housing next to and close to negative, a reality in this community, and we thank you for the support that we've gotten so far. And as you may be moved to a question and answer section, I know this is the hearing session, but when you have time, I'll have an answer for all three of the questions really that you brought up, and low chance to address that and any other question you might have.
All right.
With that, thanks.
My pleasure, Mr. McKay. Next up, you know, just the ten boards, you come up with your names and your, please, sir.
Several, someone that said, Bob Dean, who lives in June, North Carolina. Um, just, uh, some of the names I'm gonna reiterate, um, that Mr. McKay addressed, but, uh, just from a thirty thousand foot view, um, you know, this project was, uh, sort of buoyed, buoyed by an idea, um, that I've had been over several of these committees, and, you know, again, the demand for housing, we all know, in a silent city, there's, uh, there's, it's a huge, it's a huge, uh, effort for all of us to try to solve. Um, the element, the root is school. And nothing can happen until we fix the school, and we had to, and then we're walking on, um, we're down with the state or the beds, and, uh, you know, hopefully, um, with the town's help, we can, we can come to an answer on that. Um, but I mentioned at the planning board meeting that, um, Brian Thompson taught me a phrase, economic leakage. And every time a project came here, I'd have to pull Chad and Park, and I'm bringing Kirk Brad, that's where you're gonna go, that's where you're gonna go, everything's right there. And we weren't gonna get none of the benefits from, you know, housing for any climate guy. So, you know, this, this, but this idea was born for the need for housing inside of city. I, I interviewed several, um, uh, housing companies, and D R Horton runs to the, the pot because they have a quality product, they have a mortgage company, uh, own, and sell their reports that will be on site, and this was the, uh, the highest quality and fastest, uh, company that, that, uh, can actually house and ready to be built.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next, uh, speakers, Billy Williams. I want to be your name and address, please, sir.
Billy Williams, they're at one forty each aisle through, I don't see, it's down by the road. As I said at the planning board last week, I've been working with him for about twelve years, uh, involved with everything, putting back aside. Representing our building, everything is involved in there, sure. So I've been involved with it a long time. And if you don't understand just how critical science are getting, I had to call the phone call about three minutes ago with a person in Boston. He wants to buy some property here that she's ever, I was. Now that tells me it's worth getting out, and that we gotta do something, and do something fast. And I have to tell you, they don't know how, they're very stressed now, there's no hope. Luckily, I had two calls this afternoon, um, thousands of dollars, there's just nothing hardly out there. So I encourage you, you would probably say, it's a few times, or they can make things happen quickly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, thank you, is any questions? I think if any of that's answered, the, any of the questions from questions we asked earlier.
Okay, this is time?
Yes, yes, sir.
Then, first, Mayor, I'll go to your question, is point five, the, uh, street. That was just related to those thousands that have a rear entry garage, where you're coming into it from more like the, we call them lane ways versus alleyways, because a lot of them are, they, but they're really well done. But the vehicle would come into the rear of the house, parking rear house, and then the front, front yard would either be a yard as opposed to park or another public street, which would be, I think, fifty.
Yeah, fifty, right, fifty.
Fifty foot right away along the, the street and follow. So to clarify that question for you, um, I don't know what your question, Mr. Hayes.
Hayes, Hayes.
Um, reading glasses, don't let me read you. Get to that point in line, with, your question again was primarily about, uh, I was, the, the question I was asking was, um, is around the, um, this was the, is that piece? This is my, okay, okay, um, well, collectively, maybe this will handle, kind of, what you're thinking about. Um, I think what was meant by things other amendments and, or conditions that might come up, in my experience, those are used to come up in meetings like this, where somebody on the board had a concern that they wanted to add into the condition. I'm not really worried about the process adding anything to me, uh, in those conditions, because I know I have to compile with DOT standards, I gotta compile the stormwater control standards, I've got the destruction drones that are acceptable based on all of the, all these and of ordinances that regulate those construction drones, so, and I've got wetland issued water of the U S with a forward handle. So those kind of things are, yes, we're being used to dealing with after approval. The kind of amendments, I think, that that references are those that might come up tonight in this discussion, and somebody had something they wanted to say. That would be that.
I think it wasn't a good question, and I think, and wasn't even, it was specific to, if they're private streets, and private streets are the, or they're just the ones that were, you were saying, are the alleys to those, that, okay, that's, but everything else is called a street, and that would mean, I mean, by, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Don't know, Bill, I was seeing color rendering, though, it doesn't matter, and if anybody wants to see it, you know, in the, in the here, in the back room, but, uh, I'm really kinda excited about this, uh, so many times in development, we have to, um, sort of fit ourselves into an existing space. Here we've got blank canvas, and have been given the opportunity to create something really special, Community Commons Town Square, uh, with thirteen and some acres of open space with little walk-in trailers and amenities, and stuff like that. We're really kinda proud of how this came about, do you think? Any other questions?
Actually, I, I did have one, um, is, a couple times you mentioned, you know, in talking about what makes Houston affordable housing, can you tell me what the definition of affordable housing is?
Can you believe that we can possibly make it, and still, uh, I don't have a price range for you, because that's all, but currently, we're building things that are two seventy-five, you know, and, and all that are in different categories, whether they're townhomes, or starter homes, or, um, forever homes, you know, we've had a lot of different varieties of stuff we built. The company was founded with the primary vision, to build a affordable living and with power. Um, is it low income, low income, low income housing program? No, not, but we only can build what people can buy in there. And you'll see that our price range is, for example, in carry, for the same product, might be grossly different than when it is for the selling apartment camp. So, we'll, I won't give you the exact range, but two seventy-five, three fifty, somewhere in there.
Yeah, I would just, is, I just wanted to, to understand better what, what the definition was, you know, and it's a hard one to get a handle on, I'm trying to recognize that.
Any other questions, one question, more? I would say further, if, if it's on your mind, we know that the civil war and the fact that, we knew that going in, and we know that we can only get it, an allocation as you get it. Uh, we did step up to the plate and try and do something creative to help the fractal speak, although we want the major player in that, I think, contributed some to their decisions up here, because it will be a affordable housing nearby. We would just, like, you know, we're west, and we give an allocation, a powerful allocation as soon as we possibly can. Um, I think in our, our zoning request, we did request it about ninety-two thousand gallons a day, as soon as, you know, as they care of our first phase, and we think that probably is all long-term anyway. Um, but that was part of, um, our knowledge going in, and so we're not solving, that's gotta be solved, we know that. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments?
Uh, it's supposed to be a little people. So we can, now, I'm making a motion, um, so it's easier to follow up, I'm gonna do what I'm doing in the first worksheet. I'll make a motion to approve or to amend the official zoning back, and further, will that approval of the conditions submitted by the applicant be part of the approval process? And further, that the action is inconsistent with the adopted LDP, because LDP recommends rural residential development, and finally, to approve the ordinance amending the adopted future use, land use scenario.
Sir. You had a motion, sir. We need to approve, finish, make a motion, question. All of the favor of the motion, figure out, saying aye, aye, all of those like sign, and motion. And you're willing to do it.
Thank you.
There you go. Next. Open, open hand or confused, re-enchanted, limited, all the way, around, that was the meeting.
The next item on the agenda is K R twenty-three and zero four zero three, um, rolling the comments. Um, the owner is Rent Industries and Park Rides, the applicant is Dennis, you say, and August Junior. They're requesting to go from light industrial to general commercial. The property is currently addressed as to a West Second Street and a hundred and thirty parco on West Third Street. The property is approximately four acres, and the planning board recommending, as, unanimously to, uh, recommend approval to Town Council. The property is located north of West Second Street, south of West Third Street, and east of North though on the avenue, and to the west of the railroad track in downtown. It's not. There, that's okay. Alright, thank you. The zoning map shows that the property is currently on the light industrial, to the north or other prop, to the north and to the west, to the west and east of the property are other parcels that are zoning, um, general commercial. The land use map shows that this area should be developed as conservation and recreation. Conservation and recreation is defined as areas identified as the priority of the conservation of critical environmental features, or as preserved open spaces and parklands. This is due to the fact that this parcel is located in the Love Street, uh, flood, floodway. The subject property is currently developed in the former site of the Roland H Thomas Plating Field, that was constructed sometime in the nineteen twenties. The property is lo, again, the properties are located within the Love Street floodway, so there are, is located in the main flood zone. But since the property is already developed, um, there's gonna be little flood mitigation that the applicant needs to do. This is considered a down zoning from a more intense zoning district to a least intense zoning district. This is defined as the type of uses that are allowed in a limited, the light industrial zoning district, which it is now. They can have more heavy industrial, um, manufacturing in the, at the site, so they are requesting to go to a more business orientated zone for sure. Which allows meeting, um, uh, less of the intense uses that would probably, um, not get harmful, um, to the brother. The option for tonight, uh, to recommend, uh, to approve the rezoning to general commercial, or, um, rezoning to lesser, um, intense zoning district or recommend or not. That's that presentation, um, we do have applicants here, applicant here, um, to make a presentation. Are there any questions?
No, some questions. So, uh, what did, did the planning board, you said eight to zero to recommend? Uh, did you get any more details on that? Did they recommend it was consistent, inconsistent, what were their last round? Did you have that information?
They did not say it, but they, it is consistent. Um, it's inconsistent with the land use plan, but it was consistent with the overall.
That they didn't make community, so they didn't involve worksheet in their, their vote?
No.
And, uh, what, page, the third page of our packet? The first portion said rezoning request, and second says straight zoning. Some information is the same, but some of it's different. Is there a difference in those two things between a rezoning request and straight zoning?
A straight zoning means that they can, um, do any kind of use that's allowed in their zoning district, and there are no provisions, um, associated with this, um, rezoning.
So are they making, but it moved rezoning to G C then? Uh, i, i, but why did you separate the two out, I guess is what I'm asking, why do you have two sections? Is that two different votes? Is that two different worksheets? Why are there two sections there?
Are you talking on the options?
No, thanks, through.
You have one section that said rezoning request, and a section that said a straight zoning. Are there's two, uh, that he's asking, are there's two separate actions?
Are there two separate options that we have, and if so, what's the difference?
No, it's the same, the request is for us to, by straight rezoning from meaning that there is no condit, as opposed to conditional, um, there's no, um, this is a, a, a.
Alright, and you'll, y, you stated it was inconsistent. Why is it inconsistent?
With the land use map.
Why is it inconsistent?
Because the land use map calls for an area to be developed as conservation and recreation, and not business.
But it also says with areas of mixed use. And in the, in the section label of straight zoning, you said the purpose of G C zoning district is to accommodate mixed use.
Yes.
So if part of the purpose of the land use plan is to have mixed use, I, I'd like to know, cause I want, I want the motion to be correct. Why is it inconsistent?
Because under the definition of conservation and recreation, it says areas identified as priority of conservation of critical environmental features and as preserved open spaces and parklands.
So it's inconsistent with that part, but i, is it, is it consistent with the fact that it can have mixed use in that?
It's just a small, I think, what, I think the definition is a small area, and this is, the, what, what, um, yeah, what it's looking for is to resume, is, is entire, entire, uh, parco is mixed use.
Correct, cause the entire parcel is developed right now. So it's hard to say that it's a small area.
Yeah.
And the last question I have is on the worksheet, the second item is approval of conditions submitted. I looked at the packet multiple times, maybe I just missed it, I didn't see the conditions.
There's no condition associated with the, with the one.
So then it would just be a motion for items one, three, and four on the worksheet?
Yeah, there's gonna be a derivative rules.
So we don't need to make a motion for point two?
Correct. That's regarding where I, there's no condition.
Yes.
I don't, any other question? You know, one or two. And that, we have one, perfect, we sign letters and do that, we consider that we have, that great, I'm serious, or?
Oh, yeah.
We're all done, um, I'm writing it, one way, certain, I'm drawing. Uh, neither does that, like, the, the industry, we just don't look at small, that, or, or, in the, the whole last, yeah. Billy, I, I don't, we just wanna do everything, work those, we, we, not waste our time doing it again for the bigger.
Okay, so, but this, this is the section in the back by the, okay.
Yeah, and it's like that is small, Billy, alright.
Okay.
And we want to resign the whole parcel.
Cause they don't have, the whole world comes, really, not really.
Not, we, we.
Any questions coming in? Correct, I think we've got things like that. Correct, the other one, that was, uh, for, 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 here.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the official zoning map. And further, that the action is inconsistent with the adopted future land use map. Because LDP recommends that these parcels be developed as conservation and recreation with small areas of mixed use. And finally, to approve the ordinance amending the adopted future land use map.
So that can go. Remember, we had a motion, and you never said, I mean, probably the best question you might ask, or that. Hearing the answer, all those dead fakers, being about saying ah, all those photos like time, motion here. Yes. Next up, open the photo, the hearing four, 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 four. I'm really excited, like, in, in, four point three. Everest Paul, open, here.
And this one, the applicant has requested, um, to be delayed until the May seventeen meeting.
Since we said, but the next set, Monday, it's, it's, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we reset the public hearing on Everest Parcs on Monday, need to eight twenty-one degrees, six thirty P M, according to the city law.
Motion to the second, I mean, uh, we quit. All those favors, uh, all those like time, here is, so the green, it's not closed, it's a reason, a reason. Alright, old business? None, new business? For the government, and for the courts.
You're right, it's not. Uh, few things to note, uh, we discussed, uh, addressing issues with swimming pool previously. We're currently running a digital lab for the seven things that form boards, uh, in effect on that issue. Uh, it's a recommendation of the planning director in addressing process of muriors going forward, is that be something for, for the Town Council Advisors Committee to have a another advisor board review to be involved in that process, so it's something we're gonna bring there in uh, future, uh, positive views, uh, a few reasons about the S O C, uh, the, 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 and, and signed by D E Q. So there is no public hearing requirement, we've been advancing that process, which brought, to, to assign it, along with your price. There, we're just waiting, official word for, uh, fifty thousand gallons for the allocation that is issued for meeting phase one, but if you're done, we're, we're waiting word on, can we have all of the vegetables? Uh, grant that, that should be in next, um, matter of days, let's move right along. Uh, this is a reminder, uh, we have our next budget meeting on Monday, at six P M, uh, back in this room. We also, on Thursday, we have our second meeting engagement meeting at Fort A V, Diamond Church, or Miss Business District. I hope everyone remembers we come out at ten oh, there. Uh, it's also noted in the apartment packet where it's, it's noted employee, uh, field day, uh, we, we tried to change the name a couple of times there, probably with the new thing ball today. All of the team, we're trying to provide opportunity for employees to learn more about what goes on in operations across the town. So the primary area today, where the boys have enough opportunities to learn the ins and outs of how operations go in other parts, cause it's really easy to get solid in your mission and what you do in your job, and I think we get the best result when we learn how to work together as a team, and the most effective way to do that is to understand the role of the competency from the way you can look at your to do. Uh, all of the seven teams, uh, the board's welcome to participate, learn more about how operations work at the town. Uh, fire department, having their barbecue sale Wednesday, ten dollars per plate. This is Wednesday, and also, and finally, uh, recognizing our employees, the, the water plant and public works. Uh, Easter weekend, they had to come out quite a bit, do a lot of work, but we had some heavy rain here inside of city. And no one wants to have to do that when they're supposed to be recognizing that all day, spending time with their family, so special thank you to the board coming out and putting out for people of this town and what we, we do, and addressing those issues with blood. That's all, thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, what's the issues, what are the issues with the pool?
What would they think it's for?
No, 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 uh, this is.
We had talked previously about dancing around.
Oh, six.
And we need to provide, uh, members, I think, to make the type of change, I think, to the town, for, for, for.
Right. And attorney, who's there?
You all might have called if you'd set a public hearing for tonight on charter trade, but it wasn't possible to get it into the paper in time, so, uh, I've already prepared a resolution, said it for making it, I don't know if it'll be able to tonight, we're not sure that we have to send it in. We will get it in, bring the resolution on paper first. And you can advertise, if you, if you send it to our editor, I'll give it before, but.
Yeah, she advertised it, um, this will be the second one, um, this Thursday. And we can actually put it on the budget Monday.
So that, that understand.
She advertised it the previous week, you didn't, you didn't make the first paper in time, so it was advertised, the week before last, it was in this week, so we can put it on the agenda for Monday night. It'll be advertised.
But the problem is, it was advertising an hearing for tonight.
Yeah, yeah, it was, but if, we'll have to, we'll have to re-advertise it for that next year.
I've got a situation like this years ago, in another place, and I, I think we started the plane, it's my, I'm the resident, but she, at the next meeting, sending it on May fifteen, the decision day in June first, so in case you were wondering, mine wasn't, I'm not even got it.
That's it. Goodbye, twenty-eight. No close to it. My hearing, then?
If there's a majority.